We call this meeting of the Rundle Planning Board to order. Today being June 20th, 2019 at 7:02 PM. I'll start with a roll call.
You're on line first. You're in the corner.
Corinne, good day.
Marty Kane, Tom McGinn, Ben Miller.
Roger Moore. Rich Canong.
Susan Rawl.
Patrick Whitman.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. We then have public comments. We have approval of minutes from four different meetings. We have three public hearings. Runtu's Run Dog Daycare, B&amp;B Trucking, and Motorland Classic Cars. We then have pending applications from Runtu's Run, B&amp;B Trucking, Motorland Classic Cars. American Iron and Metal is looking for determination of completeness on their application. And Morocco Enterprises, a major conditional use pre-application and subdivision amendment.
To the chair.
Yes, sir.
Abe has American Iron and Metal has asked to defer to this meeting.
We will strike item number four. American Iron and Metal, they've asked to put on next week's agenda.
I'd like to suggest we put the minutes towards the end.
Toward the end?
Rather than having so much of it. We can move on to the applicants.
Okay.
Second.
Any other comments, suggestions?
That'll be my motion, just add that one change. And remember with Abe.
All those in favor of the changes? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. The next item is a public comment. This is the time during the meeting where if you have comments about things that are not on the agenda, you can, or if you have something that you would like us to address at a future date, you can let us know. Gives us stuff to work on. Does anybody have anything? Hearing nothing, we will move on to the public hearings. First public hearing is Runtu's Run Dog Daycare, a major conditional use application. A proposal to establish a pet daycare center in an existing riding stable located at 496 Limerick Road, Tax Map 27 Lot 2 in the R1 District. Kristen Woodard is the owner and applicant. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Evidently not. Would you want to make a presentation, Kristen?
Hi. On the, on February 19th, I was given a list. I feel like I have complied with everything on the list. The crate issue seems to still be an issue. I really don't feel that you can keep comparing a daycare with animal shelters. A daycare is just that. It's care for the animal during the day. Of which they would only be in a crate for maximum a couple hours a day. And yet, everything you're basing all your ordinances on are from standards of care in animal shelters. Okay, and I don't, I just don't feel that that is correct. I've given you letters from dog daycare owners talking about crates. I've given you other information about using crates. And like I said, I feel like I have complied with your list. It was said at the last meeting that the proposal that I got from Casala Waste, even though it said it was for dog daycare, it didn't say they were picking up dog waste. So I have provided you with another proposal that says they would be collecting dog waste. So I guess if you guys have any questions for me or anyone here wants to say anything.
Please state your name, please.
Nicole Kellum. And I actually am a veterinarian. I go by my maiden name, Nicole Mya. And I just, I feel like for, our recommendations oftentimes are to use crates as a safe zone for dog, you know, for a couple hours. Or if they're in the household and training, we recommend using crates for that purpose. So I don't think, again, you know, they aren't living in these crates. They're there for the day and for a couple hours. I think it's within reason to crate a dog as recommended. Some people crate them overnight, you know, especially if you have a young dog that might be getting into things. So I don't think it's an unreasonable place for a daycare to put a dog in a crate for a couple hours. And I have been to the facility and looked at the facility. And I see no problems at all with that operation as a doggy daycare there. So, and I have written that in a letter a while back after I had taken a look at it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Which ma'am?
Debbie Roach, the ACO for Rundle. And as far as the crates go, standards for the state. They don't have any requirements as far as time limits in them. They do have requirements as far as size. They do have to be able to clear them, have headroom. They have to be able to lay down, turn around, and be able to outstretch. Wooding facilities, I can't speak for them or shelters, but I can speak for breeding facilities we have in this town. And as long as the crates are not stacked and they're kept clean and they're of the approved size, they can keep them in there for the majority of the day and let them out to exercise two hours a day. And this is state of made standards. Not quite sure where the shelter standards are playing into effect. But I've also seen Chris's facility and I don't understand where the issue is here.
Did you guys have any comments?
Yes, I do.
Kellum Hayes. Go ahead. You want to go?
Go ahead. Chris, what you're calling crates, that's the wire.
Can I have your name, please?
Oh, Care Court.
Thank you.
They're not crates like the plastic crates.
They're not dairy kennels, they're not the transport kennels.
Susan, I think you were talking about putting them in crates the last time I was here.
Well, usually the word crate is synonymous with something like the dairy kennel and not a wire crate. So I don't know what, you know. In a veterinary facility, they use, you know, something that's partially a wire crate. But in most kennels, if they're not in runs, they use something like a dairy kennel.
The dairy kennel is the wire one?
No.
You're talking about a crate?
That's usually the term that's synonymous with a crate. Wire kennels are not normally addressed as crates in my experience.
Right. That's what, that's what I'm thinking is what Chris has is the wire kennels.
Correct.
And the crate, I looked up the definition of it and I can't, I won't going to say it word for word. But it talked about a crate being an implement that they put the dog or cat in that is basically like putting them in a box with holes in it. That's the definition.
Have you seen a dairy kennel? Do you know what it is?
I'm not, I don't know what a dairy kennel is. I'm going by the definition of crate. And that's why I thought that you were, you were disagreeing with her. You didn't want her to have them in those, the wired kennels that she has.
Correct.
You'd rather have them in a crate.
Well, I think your definition of a crate without having seen what a dairy kennel is, is inaccurate.
Well, I think you're going against her on what you want to call a dairy kennel or crate.
We're not going to get into that kind of a discussion. This is here, you're either speaking in support or against.
Well, I'm speaking in support, of course.
But you're not going to be having a conversation with board about what's going on.
Then why are we here?
You're, we've been, we've been having these hearings for a long.
You're fighting with her for four years.
We have, I'm sorry, but we have not been. Does anyone else have any question or comments to make about the applicant?
I think Susan owes her an apology.
For what?
Because you as much as called her a liar at the last meeting about Casala's picking up dog waste. You said, you did not believe that she, that they knew that she had dog waste.
Actually, that isn't what I said. What I said was it wasn't in the letter.
It is what you said.
Yes, ma'am?
Kellum Hayes. I think that, I understand Chris has had her state license with those wire carriers or whatever they want to call them. She's had her state license for over two years. The state came down, the state has examined her facility, the vet has examined her facility, our animal control officers have examined her facility, and I think it's time her application was approved.
Does anyone else have any comments? Hearing none at 7:13, I will end the public hearing. The next item is B&amp;B Trucking, a plenary site plan review. A proposal to establish, a proposal to a truck repair facility with associated parking and support facilities on a 2.04 acre parcel of land. Tax map for Lot 13 in the Alfred Road Business District. Robert Maskel is the owner, applicant, and Paul Dadboy is the applicant's agent. Take it away, Paul.
Good evening. So, planning board has seen this project. Hopefully, the only change we made is the last time we haven't had a chance to get together with the Woodings. I do understand that their apprehension is they're not sure which way they want to go with this project, whether or not landscaping or fences or dealing with that. So, we're proposing, and then the planning board will ensure that we listen to their comments and give us some direction as to which way the planning board feels that we should go with the project. We're still proposing to stock a fence along the entire perimeter of the truck parking area. We did come up and plant some trees in here. They're going to be seven, six foot high, I guess, touja? Bad touja, green giants. Just to soften up the fence a lot. Not that we feel a fence would be inappropriate, but that'll kind of pop off the fence from the house. And I think that would be a good compromise so that they don't feel that just stuck a fence that's going to get the fence behind the planted tree. So we're planting seven of those in this area. There is a resistant green that we're going to maintain, obviously, on property lawn. And we're going to maintain this stockade fence in the parking lot. The project was greatly reduced from last commentary we received from your body. As you can remember, the project had a net increase of 11,000 square feet in the previous area. We had two entries, two exits. The houses, the proposed building, that did quite setbacks from the residents, 75 feet. However, based on their concerns, we spent considerable time in, actually, some of our Bob's money to actually redesign the project, which means grading, stormwater, and everything else that we're going with it. And we came up with this proposal, basically putting the green as far as projects away from their residents in order to address some of their concerns. So, at this point, this is what we're proposing. I know there's issue as far as the well. Our proposed reach field need for requirement, required setback from the wells. We designed with Brady Frick of Alfred and Associates. We're talking 60 gallons per day. We're not talking a three bedroom home to produce roughly 270 gallons a day. We're talking a pretty low volume. That's what we're coming from the proposed building. So, we need required setbacks even for a three bedroom home. We need to win for setback requirements. But this is actually 60 gallons a day. So, I think I'll just turn it over to the public and listen to Cynthia's comments and take it from you. Whoever.
Anybody have any comments?
Hi, Cynthia Worthing. I do appreciate this redraw greatly. I am still concerned, I, my concern is the privacy and the stockade fence takes care of that quite a bit. Still concerned about the well. We just have a shallow dug well and that's susceptible to groundwater contamination, surface water contamination. So I just have to find out more about that, I think. Yeah, so I don't know what kind of guarantees, once I submit a concern, what kind of guarantee we have that any, any change in the water pattern will, or spills will affect our water system.
Anyone else with any comments, concerns, questions for the applicant?
Question. At one time, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul. Did you not mention that you might put another well in, in place of the shallow water well? I mean, I thought we might.
We talked about that and getting their apprehension is, you know, we trying to give them something because we're, so our was, originally we were going to get rid of the fence. But they also think the fence might be a good thing to have also. So it's kind of one of these things where the applicant would rather lose the fence and we would plant more of these, not sure, taggins to help me out. That's a plant that he was given from one of the local nurseries that would be good for that type of use. So, you know, we haven't got together. We were just planting more of these. These are 12 feet on center, they recommended to be 6 feet on center. I put 12 feet on center, obviously, just we have the fences as the buffer. And we just want to soften the fence. If we went with, out of fence, we're obviously planting a different variety of every green, 6 feet on center. So that would really be a dense pack or look. But then, right now, this is where we're at. We haven't had a chance to look at and talk about it, so. And I know she has concerns about her well.
So Mrs. Worthing, do you have a preference? If you were given a preference, would you rather have the plantings and a new drilled well?
So I don't want to choose privacy or.
No, no, you would get, you would still get privacy, but you would get plantings. That's my understanding. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, you know, if you get a drilled well and a, a green buffer that is sufficient to block what's going on on your neighbor's site, would that satisfy your concerns?
I'd like to see what, what the trees look like and what kind of privacy and what kind of privacy as far as noise and, you know, the view. Because I'm a little concerned about that. I don't know if it's like envy private, like towards the bottom. I don't, and we talked about another concern is the use of the property. You know, is it going to be just for the garage? Are we going to do any rentals or car repairs or car sales? And we did talk about that at, and I walked through. So I think I have a concern about that too.
So I would like to see what the trees look like. Maybe if we can tell me a spot that has that type of tree so that I can kind of get an idea of what kind of privacy, what kind of noise.
What tree it looks like, you mean?
I mean, everybody, two houses down from you, they have the privacy, the same thing that you talked about. And, and they, I have pretty well.
What's the name of the tree, Paul?
Again, I didn't print that out.
Which one? It's a touja, it's a, it's an arborvitae.
T-H-U-J-A, you're Googling it. T-H-U-J-A. Green giant. They grow about 30 to 40 feet tall. Their spread was, the spread on those was, back to my notes.
Pretty dense.
Yeah, that's. They're very dense. Rapid growers.
So these things grow 30 to 40 feet.
Pretty tall.
They grow 12 to, I'm sorry, the width is 12 to 16 feet wide. They recommend him space him 6 feet on center.
So those should fill in.
And they grow, they grow three to five feet per year supposedly, according to the tree's information.
And we don't have a deer population there, do we?
So are those also?
Oh, they love them. Yeah. They, they grow. So, but this is urban environment, so.
Does that answer your question somewhat?
Yeah. And the well, what kind could be with it? Drilled well? I mean, what are you?
I think what Bob said made it.
This is something we should discuss after or some other time?
I mean, ultimately, in my perspective, we've got an application in front, there's a plan in front of us. You know, they're looking to move that forward tonight. That's what we move forward to make a decision on. You know, this is great information for the Woodings to get. But, you know, ultimately, they've got to make a decision outside.
Anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Hearing none at 7:00.
I'm sorry, are we talking about what the business will be on there?
The business is, from what we've been told, there will be no car rentals. There will be nothing other than the truck repair facility itself. Am I correct?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, in the future, if I wanted to have something else, I'd have to apply.
He'd have to come and apply for her.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none at 7:22, I'll close the public hearing. And at 7:22, I will open Motorland Classic Cars, major conditional use pre-permit application. A request to construction, to construct an additional 13 spaces and a tour bus parking area on both the applicant's parcel and an adjacent property. Tax Map 2 Lot 1A in support of the conversion of the 9,900 square foot public auto showroom into an auto museum on 4.9 plus or minus acre site located at 26, 2564 Portland Road, Tax Map 2 Lot 1 in the BI District. Motorland LLC is the owner and applicant of Tax Map 2 Lot 1. EMP Properties is the owner of Tax Map 2 Lot 1A. And Sandra Gay Esquire is the applicant's agent. Take it away, Cynthia.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you holding the meeting this week. So I'm going to let Paul obviously come up and go with the plan with you. You went to the site walk. I just do want to say that what says on the agenda, obviously, was the original plan that was submitted. The plan was amended, it was brought to you at the last meeting, more or less like this, on the site walk to remind you, you accepted that application. The new application is being complete. So it no longer involves anything on the abiding property. All of the work, which is really just basically restructuring of the parking lot is being done on the existing Motorland property. Nothing's happening on the, it's like. So I think with that, Paul, you want to go over the, Cynthia?
The plan hasn't changed since the last time we looked at it significantly. I know at the site walk, we mentioned about putting some concrete wheel stops to separate the, the foyer parking and the museum parking area. So I think Tim actually went ahead and did that. Put in wheel stops along this line. This plan I'm showing, I'm showing bullets instead of the wheel stops. So obviously, the applicant wants to do the right thing. I guess whatever the planning board decides, that's what we'll go with. But, you know, at the site walk, Ted did mention that we should separate these foyer parking and museum parking with some sort of barrier. Unbeknownst to me, they already talked about putting these wheels, concrete wheel stops in. So that's going to take care of it. I'm showing bullets. So I guess we're here to get approvals on the project. And the applicant would be glad to go anywhere the planning board sees fit and that's it.
Anyone in the audience have any questions for the applicant? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing at 7:26. Moving on, pending applications. Runtu's Run Dog Daycare, major conditional use application. A proposal to establish a pet daycare center in an existing riding stable located at 496 Limerick Road, Tax Map 27 Lot 2 in the R1 District. Kristen Woodard is the owner and applicant. Do you have anything additional for us, Mr. Brown?
Nothing more than what we did last time. I guess my understanding that you had, you received a letter, a new letter from Casala.
We did, we did get a, a letter from Casala. And it does comment that, to whom it may concern, we will be providing removal of bagged animal waste feces.
So when did we, that came to us or that came to Chris and then it came to us? It came directly to us?
No, it's just Chris dropped it off tonight. But the letter was written by Casala back on June 3rd.
The original letter was written by Casala on June 3rd. This is an amendment.
I'm not sure because I never saw the original letter.
Well, the original amendment is here. This was part of the original letter.
The proposal was not part of the original letter?
No. It didn't say to whom it may concern.
The first letter did not.
That's correct. And that is all I said when I took exception to the letter.
Thank you. What's going on?
Believe me, I will. So this was an addition.
They redid the letter.
They redid the letter, the whole letter? Or this is the letter and this was the, came later?
That one that you have is the most recent one that they sent.
And when was it received? Because it's not dated. And it's not technically on the letterhead. No, that's the date of the original. This came after.
Yeah, she's saying that the proposal was, was secondary, it came after the letter.
We had the letter originally. And that's when I took exception to it. It didn't say anything about dog waste. Then this came. When, when was it received, Chris?
The phone number is on me, you have to pick up.
I was just curious. It's not dated. It's not signed.
Any questions?
With this package from Casala, there's some pictures. Is, what's that showing us?
That, that's the proposed indoor play space.
Has the new floor that was put down?
I'm in the process of putting down rubber floor.
Is this, this, the playroom or just where all the?
No, that's the, the empty room is the playroom.
This was formerly the garage, right? The garage doors is still there, right?
And has that, has that changed at all, the garage? That's the room had dirt floor?
No, it doesn't have dirt floor.
Well, it was unfinished, I guess, compared to.
Yeah, it's coming along.
Okay, that, that's, there's no pictures of that here.
Yeah, you have the door of play space, yes, that's what those pictures.
So this is the play area, not, not?
Right.
Not where?
Those, those are pictures from, to the.
So I missed them. I'm sorry. Also have, there needs clarification on the crate issue. I know when we did our site walks back in January, they, they said they would have been stacked and now they're not going to stack or?
I never said I was going to stack them.
Okay, oh, that's good. All right.
Explain, how, how are they raised? Like how high? You know, the, the pictures look like they're pretty much right on the floor, which, I mean, I don't have any issue with. I'm just curious, where you, you're talking about raising them.
Well, yes. Susan said that they needed to be raised. So I raised them.
No, I don't think I said that either. And I, I asked you how you were going to deal with waste and elimination if there was no tray underneath.
There are trays.
Well, now there are trays.
There always was.
So.
There were trays, that's why I bought the crates.
I don't think I ever, I can watch the film, but I don't think I ever said that they needed to be raised. But, you know, I could be mistaken. They definitely need something underneath, whether or not that's.
Well, they all have kennels. They all have the plastic kennels.
This is... So, I mean, left to your own, you know, decision, would they, would they, the pans and the, and the wire crates be right on the ground, or would they be up?
Well, there's a wood floor over the cement floor in that room.
Well, sure. I mean, but I mean elevated up off of whatever the floor is.
Well, that's what I've done, because that's what I was told when we... So they're raised, and they have pants. They always have pants.
So how high, how high are they raised?
About four inches.
Okay. So, I mean, pretty close to the floor, yeah.
Well, you know, you get elderly dogs, you want them, you know, put off the floor, or they're gonna fall out of it.
Oh, no, and that's where my curiosity is more of, you know, elevating and raising them too much, and what the, what that purpose would serve. So that's where I wanted to understand, you know, in the relation of the floor, how, how close it would be.
I'm just trying to do what you guys are telling me to do. That, that's all I'm trying to do.
Well, I think, Jamie, last time, you suggested, when we got into a discussion about qualitative differences in kennels, dog runs, wire crates, that we should just stick to the land use ordinance.
Yep.
And whatever it says. And I don't believe, given what the land use ordinance says, do you want to clarify that, so we know whether or not Chris's application is in compliance? If it is, she should get her permit. And if it's not, you should vote accordingly.
Yeah, maybe. And I don't see anything in here right off the bat about...
I thought it said something about wire crates.
About them... Oh, I was, I was looking specifically for how, for the raising of them. Do you know of something with wire crates?
I think there was a provision that was read last time, I don't have it in front of me, that said something about wire crates and the way in which the dogs should be housed according to Arundel's land use ordinance. If I'm not correct, then we should vote accordingly.
I'm reading item K, or line K. Dogs shall not be caged individually except for an area in which aggressive dogs can be separated. I mean, it's my, I, I guess, from under, my understanding of what Chris is looking to propose is that they would not be caged for an extended duration.
But that isn't what the ordinance says.
No, but I think we've got to make some, I mean, in my opinion, we've got to make some judgment within the ordinance of what's, what's appropriate. I mean, and if they're, my opinion is if they're given an ample space to recreate, and ample space to commune with their, their sort of daycare partners, but then they have a, an individual kennel for, or cage for them to retreat to if they so desire. I don't really have too much of an issue with that. I mean, understanding something, some other kind of, of argument as to why that's, that's poor for the dog. Well, when we went, if I may, through the chat, the only reason this, this is in the ordinance was because the primary, all of the dog, when we did pet daycare centers, when we did this back, what? Three, four, four years ago, we did this? And it was supposed to be just for the business district. It was supposed to be like a daycare center, drop it off in the business district, under the work. And the primary use in all the, the model ones that we had found in other towns and other cities, other states, was the guidelines for standards of care in animal shelters. That's what all the dog trainers said, this is what you should be doing, use it as your standard. And it was cited in, in, uh, in a number of other ordinances. And so we use that as, as a primary thing. And it's done by the Association of Shelter Veterans, the latest copy, it's two thousand and ten. And where that came from originally, just to let you know, was on page nine of that document. Actually, it's on page, it starts on page seven, where it talks about primary enclosures for animals that are kept, you know, in such facilities. And it said, "Primary enclosures defined as an area of confinement, such as a cage, one kennel, stall, or pen, which an animal eats, sleeps, or spends most of its time sheltering situations depending on majority of the time. Primary enclosures structurally sound, maintain safe working condition, prevents injury, keeps other animals out, enables animals to remain dry and clean, must not have any sharp edges, gaps, or other defects that could cause injury, trap a limb or other body parts. Secure latches should be there. Wearing mesh bottoms or sled floors or cages are not acceptable for primary enclosures for cats and dogs. Enclosure that permit, permit care and cleaning without removal of the animals, double-sided or compartmentalized enclosure, or the report to prevent disease, transmission, and should provide for recently admitted or ill animals. Primary enclosures should be readily cleaned and disinfected, even in home-based shelters with the home itself, where women, women in the home may be, the primary enclosure sanitation is important." And it goes on with a number of other things. One of it says, then it says cages or crates intended for short-term temporary confinement or travel are acceptable as primary enclosures, and are cruel if used as such. They also have sizes, which they talk about, a light lay-down area, a food area, and, you know, a litter area. And they talk about that, that the dog's tail should not be confined by it, that they should be able to turn around, they should be able to move, their head and their tail should not be, should not touch the, the, the top of the enclosure. So that's where the point of it came up with this. Those, that's where that statement came. So, so, so did everybody know this? If this was not made up, this was not something that the point of it just, aren't we sure it created? That's where that, that statement came. And so that's, and it's cited as, as a reference in there, in our ordinance. And so I just thought I'd let you know where that came from. And it's, the issue, the problem is, is it is in the ordinance. Understood. But, and I would, and I would, if that was their, what I would even consider their primary, you know, sort of place of residence within the, the doggy daycare, then I would want to take a, a very strict line on that. But I don't, I don't get the sense that that is the, that the, the animals are gonna be forced to remain in the kennel, in an individual cage for their entire duration of the day. I mean, is that...
Thank you.
Well, no, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just trying to understand what's going on. And that's what I've heard from you.
Yes.
You know, at, at these meetings. And, I mean, that's why, you know, at, at one of the previous meetings, I wanted to get a real good, clear understanding of what their, what a day in the life of one of your animals would be.
Right. Right. And I, I believe I provided a little, little...
Yeah, you did.
And, and yes, I mean, I, what I just, I mean, I know you needed to go by something. Okay, you needed to have something to go by. But an animal shelter, the, the dog is housed twenty-four hours a day. You know, maybe they have a run, maybe they go out for walks. Okay, daycare is something totally different. Okay, they're only there for the day. And other than bad weather, they're only gonna be in a crate, but like I said, not more than a couple hours a day. So I, the, the comparison, you really, you can't compare.
So, let me, let, let me ask a question. When, did, would you envision a well-behaved dog having to be locked within the crate?
All day?
No, no, no. At, at any point in time, where, you know, would you, would you need them to go in and then lock the door behind it? So like, I'm, I'm envisioning my dog. I mean, and that's, you know, for lack of anything better, that's, that's what I can do. And, and think that when we had a, a crate in the house for her, you know, there would be times that she would go in it. She would lay down, reside for a little bit, rest, get away from whatever. But rarely was it locked behind her.
Right.
I mean, what is your, what is your envisionment or plan for how you would handle an animal, a well-behaved animal, through the course of the day?
Well, the whole reason for them to come into a crate is to rest. I mean, daycares, that, they have people bring their dogs to daycare to have them have fun. You know, the, the young, the zuber dogs, you know, some of their energy. But they can't play all day. They, they have to have a, a rest time. And most dogs love their crates. Most dogs don't have a problem, they'll go right in them. My dog sleeps in the, in the crate with the door open.
I have a question for the vet. So when you, would you consider a wire crate that's basically exposed to the other wire crates, using the term crate loosely? Do you think that dogs, when you kennel your dogs in crates in your vet, are they protected on their sides, or are they...
I thought there were dividers, so they couldn't...
That it was like foam cord that was, uh, plastic tied to each side of the crate to separate them, but the crates were not enclosures. So it's like oak tag.
But that would keep them from...
But you're concerned about them biting through the... So the crate is a wire crate, so she's talking about, in the ordinance, it talks about that the dog should be able to go in and rest and whatever. In your professional opinion, this has nothing to do with the land use ordinance, can a dog in a wire crate that has this material, um, zip-tied to the sides of the wire crate, is that sufficient privacy for a dog to go in and rest?
If they aren't seeing each other, I don't think they're going to be egging each other on through that, so I think...
Chris, do you have a picture of what you were gonna do with the wire crates, the one you initially provided the board? I didn't bring mine with me.
With the dividers?
Yes, you were sitting in one of the crates, and then you had the crates next to each other with the plastic dividers or foam cord or whatever.
Yeah, I think that shows it.
Right. So this was it. So do you think that's sufficient? Would you say that that's...
Yeah, I know. I think that's sufficient.
You do, yes. And so do you use, use this kind of thing in your veterinary facility?
I, I don't have a veterinary facility. I do work on the road, I do large animal work, but I see a lot of different operations when I go on the road. I see other boarding places. And, um, I think that this is a lot nicer than a lot of the boarding places I do see, honestly. I'm not in a boat.
Okay. Tom, did you see this? And there was another picture of Chris sitting in the crate with the dog and the child. Well, again, I mean, I will vote yes if it's in accordance with the land use ordinance, and no if it's not. Very simple, for me.
Chris, how many animals did you claim you wanted, Heather?
None, we'll be done.
Thank you.
So, will it be ten separate cages and crates?
You have a site plan with the application, which is the layout.
And this is the material that would be separated from the house?
It's also easy to remove, it's not heavy.
Yeah, it's like we brought my glasses, or maybe we washed it, sanitized or anything else. Well, it was for this way. It almost feels the same texture to the steel door on the outside, so it's coating. I don't know what it's called. I know what it is, duck call.
Does anybody else have any comments? Anybody on board? The only problem I have with this ordinance is in section K. Dogs shall not be caged individually. This ordinance was written by you. You took, you took it to town meeting, within, because you didn't like the way we had it done originally. That is in there, and you left it there. And I can only assume that you left it there deliberately. And because it is there, I would be opposed to this, to this permit. Because it says, "Dogs shall not be caged individually." And you had the opportunity to correct that and did not do so.
Yes, it was an oversight.
Can I ask what, why that, that would have been an issue at all, why you wanted to have it included in the first place?
It was an oversight. Very simple. I did, I did look at it, and I think, I thought, why would that say that? Why would it say dogs not to be caged individually? It doesn't make any sense. But yes, I, I was an oversight.
Well, there are free daycares. I mean, there are daycare, dog daycares where they say that they, all the dogs are out and free all day long, which is insanity often. So, anyway.
Well, and, and that's where I read that as that they shall, they, they can't be caged individually, which I, I, I interpret that in, in the context of this application of that they can't be, you know, what I would say, locked in there for an extended period of time without that, that ability to socialize with their, their, the other dogs. And I don't get the sense that, that that's the nature of what she's looking to do. It doesn't, what, what that, does not say in our ordinance is that you cannot have individual cages for an animal. It says they can't be caged, and which to me is, you know, to cage something is to lock it in. And I, I would think that what the, the business model that she has is that they would not be locked, they'd be able to go in for the time that they would want to for rest and, and quiet time versus sort of a, you know, mandatory caging to, for segregation.
Well, I think you're conjecturing. And we're fairly stringent about adhering to what the land use ordinance says.
Yeah, and, and we're gonna conjecture...
If it needs to be changed, then I think we should do that, not tonight or today, and then revisit the, um, you know, the application.
Can, can you just go with, with this issue? Jamie, what, what you're saying, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to come to the same conclusion, but would you be saying that, pretty much, that they, they won't be left in that, that, the, the word cage, you're seeing it as not just a crate? It's, it's, it's an enclosed, locked...
It's the act of keeping the animal in a crate, I would say.
It's not free roaming.
Right.
An open-door policy.
Right.
An open-door policy, they, they can come and go.
I wish...
They're free roaming.
Wish that line wasn't in there, or one way to resolve this, this conflict is, have no crates at all, but that's, that's not good for the dogs.
Right.
Again, it was an oversight, but again, that was out of standards of care in animal shelters.
Right.
And I know it's in there. I know it's in there.
As the chair said, that this, you wrote this.
Right.
And we're talking about...
I didn't, I didn't write, that was what you came up with, and I didn't disagree with, I didn't change it. And I should have. But it was an oversight.
What's the board's pleasure?
I think you should vote.
I, we need a motion. And I don't, I can't make the motion.
I move that we vote on, um, the application for a positive one.
Vote, which way? Up or down? It, it has to be specific. We either have to vote to approve or deny.
I vote that, I submit, um, or wait, you, I, you know, I'm terrible at voting these things. So help me here.
Are you gonna make motion deny the application?
I, I am making a motion to not deny the application until the land use ordinance is corrected. And Chris, oh, can I...
It's, it's just deny it, we can't...
I move that we deny the application.
Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion fails. Is there another motion?
I'm, I'm moving to approve the application.
Motion has been made to approve the application. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the application.
Discussion.
Time for discussion.
But the, the one thing that I need to be convinced that Craig is being that, that they're not being caged individually. So that, I guess that's my own, my own interpretation. I have to...
From, from my perspective, I would put the ordinance and it says, and, and it's not ambivalent. It says dogs shall not be caged individually. That doesn't leave room for interpretation. And that's why I think we have to defeat the ordinance, the applicant.
Now, this has been going on for a long time.
It has.
And, um, we're, I think we've all been working towards making this work or getting this to work. If we, if we wait till the ordinance is changed, we're looking at maybe half a year or more. Yeah, maybe a year.
By statute, you have, you have thirty days to make a decision on this. The applicant asked for extensions, allowing it to be only a hundred and twenty more days. Excuse me, yeah, sixteen, sixteen.
Sixteen, sixteen.
Forgot that pass. But if...
But the applicant, the, the, during that period of time, the ordinance could be changed, sent to a public hearing, and if this election had a special meeting, it could be on a special meeting agenda.
Just remember, Tom, it's a, I don't, I, I don't think I have to remind you that it ends up being a slippery slope. If you start with a land use ordinance that says X, I think it's, it is on its face very clear. And not just for run, choose run, but for other matters. And we decide for various, you know, reasons, either, you know, historical or semantics or whatever, that we are going to ignore what's actually in the land use ordinance, then what's the purpose of the land use ordinance in the first place? Either we abide by what's written and we change it so that it's accurate and, you know, and not impossible to comply with, or we don't have land use ordinances or ordinances, period, because we're gonna make it up as we go along.
I agree, but then there's also the, the interpretation of, of, of what it says too.
Well, that's pretty clear, what it says. It's a, it's, it's a problem, what it says. Do I think it's, it's a good, uh, description of what a kennel should be? No, I don't think dogs should be running all over the place. But the fact is, that's what it says, among other things.
This is one of those things that, um, if, earlier, well, I'm gonna say two things. One is if we had seen this as an issue, we should have worked on, on changing it. On the other hand, we didn't wanna change it because this came from the applicant that has written. So we're afraid to start changing it on you and being accused of changing what you, what you put together and it was approved by, by town meeting. So we left hands off, figured maybe that's what...
I didn't put that in.
This was, but we, this, this was, this was from you. This was, this was changed, the whole, this whole section was changed from, from what was there two years ago. And this is part of the package that was proposed and approved.
I did change a few things, but, but original of what the board came up with for ordinances, that was one of them. Okay, I didn't come up with that. I just didn't change it.
But this is a whole package that, that was approved. It was all one package, it all came as one proposal.
Right, but I did, um, change some of the ordinance, I got a petition and changed some, but that was one that I didn't. It was an oversight and I shouldn't have changed it.
Any more discussion on the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, Marty.
Question through the thought. If it is goes forward and then there are changes at a later date, are we just gonna come back at us and saying, well, why didn't, why, why are these changes being done where it's already been approved?
More, more for clarification than anything. If, if, if at some point the ordinance was changed, if, if, if we approve this, this application the way it is, and at some point in the future, the ordinance gets changed to eliminate that, that...
Better for clarification.
It's clarification. But if the applicant gets denied, then it's, I don't know what it's gonna get looked at or how people are gonna take it to, to say, well, it was in there and you changed it. Why? We gotta ask it, which is usually why we do things.
I'm, I'm still making my decision out loud, that I am going back to the, the word shall not.
Yeah.
The phrase, the shall not. And we have no way of, of...
Or, or, you know...
Legal, whether that's wish, parking's a tie, regardless of the intent of what it says. This is, this is what it says.
Any other discussion? I'm gonna call for a vote on the, on the motion.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, point of order, I think you need to read it. What are the findings of facts? Okay?
Oh, okay, I was gonna read them afterwards.
Produce all that stuff enough.
Oh, no, I was gonna read them afterwards. Okay. Whereas on January tenth, two thousand nineteen, the Arundel Planning Board received a major conditional use application from Kristen Woodard to establish a pet daycare center serving no more than ten canines in an existing garage located at four ninety-six Limerick Road, tax map twenty-seven, lot two in the R one district. Whereas on January twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, the planning board conducted a site walk at the proposed facility, facility to assess the existing facility's conformance with standards of land use ordinance section nine three thirty-three. Whereas on February fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, the planning board discussed a substantial number of facility and site deficiencies that were noted by the planning board at the January twenty-sixth site walk. At the board's request, the town planner enumerated these deficiencies in a letter sent to the applicant and dated February seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. Whereas on May ninth, two thousand nineteen, the applicant resubmitted documentation and plan revisions in response to planning board concerns discussed at the February fourteenth meeting and the February seventeenth letter. Whereas on May twenty-third, two thousand nine, nineteen, the planning board determined the application complete and scheduled a public hearing for June thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. Whereas on June thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, the planning board conducted a public hearing in conformance with land use section nine two nine. And whereas the Arundel Planning Board has determined the following findings of fact and condition of decision. Findings of fact, the owner of the property is Kristen and Hildegard Woodward. I hope I pronounced that properly. Number two, the property is located at four ninety-six Limerick Road, tax map twenty-seven, lot two in the R one district. Number three, the property currently contains a residence detached garage and a horse stable operation and adjoining fields and woods. Number four, the applicant proposes to develop a dog daycare facility serving ten canines in the detached garage located east of the residence. Number five, the proposed facility is located within a detached garage that is partially conditioned consisting of three hundred and twenty-two square foot kennel room with ten individual transport cages and attached one hundred and eighty-four square foot garage bay designated as an indoor play area and an outdoor five thousand nine hundred square foot group play area enclosed by an eight foot high wire fence. The applicant proposes to install semi-opague screening on all portions of the outdoor fencing facing adjacent residences and living areas to both screen the pens from said residents and to discourage exciting the kennel dogs. The outdoor play area will provide animals with approximately five hundred and ninety square feet per canine, while the indoor space will provide eighteen square feet per canine, assuming all dogs are using the space at one time. Number six, the indoor, the outdoor play area meets all setback requirements of the land use ordinance section nine three thirty-three two A. The indoor kennel space is proposed to contain a double gated entry to prevent canines escaping the facility upon egressing or ingressing the main entrance. Number eight, when not in the outdoor, when not in the indoor or outdoor play area, dogs are proposed to be housed in ten individual cages. The complement of cages is proposed to be six extra large cages measuring four by two points, two and a, two and a half feet by two, two foot eight inches. Serving large dogs, two cages measuring three point five one times two feet four inches with a width of two feet seven inches high. Serving medium sized dogs in two cages measuring three foot one inch times two foot wide cages serving medium to small dogs. Cages shall have a pan on the bottom. The floor of the existing kennel area consists of carpet over a wood substratum. Number nine, the kennel area will be heated by an existing monitor type stove while the applicant proposes to install a mini split heat pump to provide heating and cooling for the indoor exercise area. Number ten, there are no indoor plumbing or water supplies within the kennel building. Water supply is to be either carried from the main house to the kennel building or supplied by a garden hose. Number eleven, access to the outdoor play area shall be from a single door at the rear of the kennel room. Number twelve, the applicant proposes to provide six parking spaces in the existing parking lot on the property to serve clients and one handicap space located in front of the garage and designated and striped as an ADA parking space. Number thirteen, the applicant proposes to illuminate the parking area and kennel floor entrance by two wall mounted K E, K A B two hundred and fifty watt metal halide shoebox type fixture mounted at no greater height than twenty feet over the main facility entrance and the corner of the main house. Plans for the proposed lighting are documented by submissions from Camille's Electric LLC of Bedford, Maine, dated June twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. Number fourteen, the applicant has submitted a document from Casella Waste indicating a willing, willingness to contract with the property owner for trash removal. The letter of intent does alternative strategy, strategy for disposing of canine feces. Number fifteen, the applicant has submitted certification that she is a certified animal trainer in accordance with land use ordinance section nine three thirty-three three D. Number sixteen, the Arundel Fire Department has certified that the facility is in compliance with land use ordinance section five point seven, provided two fire antiquities are provided in the kennel area. Antiquities?
No, I spelled it wrong.
What's the difference? Two fire extinguishers. Provided, that's a slight difference.
It's apple.
Okay.
Tim doesn't like it spelled that way.
The Arundel Public Works Department has determined that the driveway entrance into, onto Limerick Road is sufficient to accommodate ingressing and egressing traffic to the proposed facility. Plan documentation of the applicant's proposed improvements include a parking plan prepared by John W. Einsidler, R A, and dated four eighteen eighteen. Lighting plan and specifications prepared by Camille's Electric LLC dated June twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen. Interior architectural drawing and layouts as well as a dimensional plan of the outdoor exercise yard prepared by the applicant. Conformance with conditional use criteria. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria of section nine two, not, nine two nine of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. Nine two nine one, that the use is compatible with and similar to the general categories of uses of neighboring properties. Pet daycare facilities are conditional uses in the R one. The use is consistent in scale and use for other uses in the surrounding neighborhood and district. Nine two...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, point of order.
I don't really know what you wrote.
You should vote on each one of these.
Oh, thank you, I forgot about that. You're right, conditional usage...
I'll move to, uh, to back.
Nine two nine one is, motion has been made to approve. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Motion has been made and seconded for nine two nine one. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yay.
Five yes and one no. Nine two nine two, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood in that the comprehensive plan does not specifically address the introduction of pet daycare facilities in residential districts. Kennels are in fact prohibited from the district. However, the town meeting approved this use for the R one district given specific performance standards. Need a motion?
Yay.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for nine two nine two. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Yay.
Five, one. Nine two nine three, that there is adequate and safe pedestrian and particular access to and into the site to accommodate anticipated traffic to and from the use. The proposed parking lot lay, layout meets the minimum requirements for... Yeah, it's wrong. The Public Works Department has approved the driveway access onto Limerick Road.
Can just...
For the use, which...
Okay. The Public Works Department has approved the driveway access into Limerick Road. It, it meets or exceeds the use.
Park and bill report, it exceeds.
Okay. The proposed parking layout meets or exceeds...
Requires requirements for the use as specified in L U O session five twelve four.
Okay.
Motion for approval. Motion's been made and seconded for nine two nine three. All those in favor?
Yay.
Yeah.
It is unanimous. Nine two nine four, that there is adequate water supply and sewage disposal service available to, to, for the use. There is no direct water supply provided to the proposed facility to meet sanitation or animal hydration needs. All water will be carried in by hand or delivered to the facility by garden hose. There is no toilet facility in the proposed house for disposing of any waste. Human attendants will use existing facilities in the main house. The applicant has a proposed plan for canine feces pickup like Casella Waste.
So all of the water will come from inside the main residence of the house? Outdoor, like spigots out at the area? What about in the winter?
I would drain the hose in the barn for forty years so I can drain this shit out instead.
Are we allowed to ask questions here?
I just did.
Questions should be before.
It's okay.
Hazard. The question is, is there adequate water to the sewage disposal?
We need a motion.
Yay.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for nine two nine four. Discussion amongst ourselves.
I'm just curious about, um, the attendance of human attendants. If, um, which is only one of them, and leaving ten dogs. I don't know how convenient or how, how close an access it is.
But it's like, it's just no farther than that to that door.
If you remember when we went on a site walk. Is there adequate water supply? Isn't that really...
And water supply and sewage disposal. And from the, from the, from a human point of view, you're gonna have to leave the animals, go inside the main house for however long you're going to be in there, and then come back. Unless the animals are caged and the door is locked for each one of those cages, I fail to see how you can monitor the animals. They will, if they're going to be doing a free-range in and out, then they're going to be doing a free-range in and out, then people go inside to use the facilities. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of nine-two-nine-four?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
That is, five to one. Uh, one yes and five no. Nine-two-nine-five, that there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibration, or smoke generated by the use that will adversely affect neighboring properties in that there is potential for noise ordinances for barking dogs. The applicant has a plan for remedying excessive barking where the applicant proposes exterior lighting that meets Land Use Ordinance Section five-point-one-zero.
Move go pro.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve. Nine-two-nine-five. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed?
I think the barking dogs.
Okay.
I hate to live next to them.
Five in favor and one opposed.
I'm aware of the point that there is provision. The last one, the excessive barking is, shall be remedied in, 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 in the application of.
Nine-two-nine-six, that the physical characteristics of the site, including slope, including location, slope, soils, drainage, and vegetative cover are suitable for the proposed use. The proposed use will not measurably change the existing topography, slopes, soils, or vegetative cover of the site.
Move go pro.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for nine-two-nine-six. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Nine-two-nine-seven, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. No additional nuisances will be generated by the proposed use.
So, move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for nine-two-nine-seven. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Five in favor and one opposed.
Who's the one opposed?
Tom. Nine-two-nine-eight, that all other requirements and applicable provisions of this ordinance, particularly any pertinent performance standards, are met. The applicant has substantially met all of performance standards of Land Use Ordinance Section nine-three-thirty-three and all other pertinent sections of the Land Use Ordinance.
Move go pro.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I see, which one was?
Nine-two-nine-eight.
Yeah, I, I know you're at eight, but I mean.
Nine. Nine, for me, nine, one-three, three-thirty-three includes dogs shall not be caged.
Yeah.
That's all of that, Tom.
But we, before we discuss it, we need to have a second on the motion.
I'll second it just to move it.
The motion has been made and seconded. Now we can have the discussion. Do you want to say that again, Tom?
That, um, this, addressed, the, the part of this, uh, the performance standards of that section includes the phrase, dog shall not be caged, in the first words.
Is there any other, any other discussion by anyone?
Question.
Yeah, Marty.
Maybe of, of, maybe not individually, but if they're in a group, then they're running as a pack. But if they turn around and have an individual, even with an open-door policy. Uh, be, with the open-door policy, they're not considered being per se caged, because that's like sending the kid to the bedroom with the door open.
Yeah, and that, that's, that's what I'm trying to see it as, but I don't know if it, it actually fit in there or not.
Let me see, I don't, I don't think the issue of their running as a pack would come into play. You could have two animals in a cage, and we saw that in, in photos that Kristen provided up to us, where she was in the cage along with a couple of dogs. So, you know, they're big enough, I would say that they were big enough to have, but that's not, uh, the ordinance doesn't give you that option. Okay, so, nine-two-nine-eight. Motion has been made and seconded. Any more discussion?
Yeah.
Yep.
This, this is, this is what it hinges on for me. With that, uh, shall not be caged, does that mean shutting and locking that door or not? That's what I don't know. Is anybody else see on that?
I don't think it.
It's left open, Marty said?
At some, you can't leave it open all the time. At some point, that door is gonna end up being closed and secured.
But that, would that only be if there's an aggressive dog?
No, the aggressive dog is going to be, uh, secured separately, according to the ordinance. That dog is going to be moved off to a separate location and secured, and then, uh, the applicant has to call, they don't want to have them come get the dog. But what do you, I don't know. To me, this is a pretty clear statement.
Unfortunately, that's the way it is. I'll, I'll also say this, because I know where we, no matter which way I go, I, I think we probably didn't do the right thing. Yeah, this is one of those, this is one of those, uh, applications where.
Damn, can you have damn account?
Yeah, but just, no matter what, it, it's gonna be issues. What, in the back of my head, it is, I know we've been accused of coming up, making things up at, at the last minute at, at every meeting, and I don't know if that's the case, because every application is, is evolving, dynamic, and it's always new factors and things we hadn't seen before. But this has been in there all along. I don't know if, if, I know I didn't bring it up to say that this needs to be addressed in mind. But I don't want to, um, be, um, in a position of throwing out another app, roadblock at the last minute. That's what I think this could look like. And I don't think that's what we're doing. I think we're just going by what, what the rules say. That's our job, is to interpret the rules as written. Especially when the applicant wrote those, those rules and said, this is what we want, and without, um, any chance for a pling boy to maybe say, are you sure you want this or something? So, if, if only we had been part of discussion, maybe we would have seen it, but that didn't happen.
But that ultimately has, I mean, that, that is irrelevant in the decision-making process of interpreting.
That's true, yeah.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Marty?
I was an aye.
Okay. Two in favor, four opposed. Therefore, be it resolved that based upon the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby denies the conditional use application of Kristen Woodard to establish a pet daycare serving no more than ten canines in the existing garage located at four-ninety-six Limerick Road, tax map twenty-seven, lot two, in the R-one district. And they're on, they're on no condition. She, she did not meet the eight conditional use criteria. Therefore, the applicant fails.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I ask, uh, if this is a, without prejudice, deny?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's that question? I didn't hear you.
Without prejudice. Should state it there, without prejudice, we see, applicant, we, we submitted, with prejudice, they have to wait for a year.
Do we have to make a motion on that?
I would, regularly.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that, um, if the, uh, decision is made without prejudice.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to deny without prejudice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is unanimous. It's unanimous. Yeah, Marty.
Is there anything else that should be changed or guidelines for easier?
That might be a meeting that might be held at, in other business, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's, now is not the appropriate time.
Okay.
Onto the next item, B and B trucking, planetary site plan review. Proposed to a, for a truck repair facility associated with parking and support facilities with zero acre.
Take and earn on your words.
On two-point-zero-four acre parcel with land tax map four, lot thirteen, in the Alker Road Business District, Robert Masco is the owner, applicant Paul Gadboy is the applicant's Does the board have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah. How soon are you meeting with the, uh, the owner? And to try to?
We've tried, we've tried since the last meeting. We've called, tried to meet up with him, and they don't wanna meet. But if, if, that, if we approve this.
Then, then that's why I'm asking, I mean.
We're approving it without any changes, so. Well, we're approving it as they.
As it is.
Right.
I mean, there's always something changed.
Want something different than, you know, bad.
Right, sure.
Yes, sir.
You don't have to find us a background, you see, as well.
Okay. At least I know why I can't find.
Because we weren't sure exactly where we were on this.
Okay.
Okay, so it's time to?
There, there's time, you, you can schedule for the next meeting, which is next week. You can schedule for the next meeting in, in, in July, first meeting in July, that's real.
We, we have thirty, if, if we approve it, that's thirty days to get the findings of fact. So, at least, let's, let's let the applicant know. No, we won't need another public, you know.
Did you say, you have thirty days to make?
No, no, no. We, we would have thirty days to go.
To make a decision.
To make the decision. But if, if we decide that we can do that, we can let the applicant know and then take the paperwork. The paperwork.
Paul, it's, it's basically preferred all runoff away from the, as well.
The area of influence. Basically, uh, it is. All this new payment is running in this direction. Okay, so, yeah, we're not running in, um, the upper watershed, it used to be paved northern state to the lower, and that, all of that area actually came down to her property. That's being diverted and there were curving, then a ditch, so, set it around. Uh, word, I have a, have the buildings, I have drip edge for the buildings, the chicken buildings, and the platform is designed so it drains, um, towards the existing ditch for the pond. So, I mean, we do think the amount of runoff there are probably considerably.
No, it's completely the opposite of what they have.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Four and two in that location, yes.
Right.
So, it will be curved across the whole front of your parcel and in, right about there, their property line?
Yeah. Yeah, it'll, uh, there'll be one entrance behind the house to the driveway. Other than that, it'll be curved to that.
They have a raised island there. States, yeah, they have two curves. Raised island, states do the raised island.
Do the raised island.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, no, I'm talking about right there along, at there, where their well is. We were talking about the grading and their well. Oh, okay.
And it's all flowing in the other direction?
Yeah, I graded all the park and curves right in this direction.
Okay.
Yes, all of it. Yeah. Kid, we saved the Big Maple, which is a nice and rare. That's only natural place.
Yeah. Ted, I know during the site walking, we talked about, there was some discussion about the, um, pond.
Yeah.
Was this, was this, uh, reviewed by, uh, the D E P? Didn't have to go up through that level or anything?
Oh, it had the pond reviewed by Chris Colby, who used to work for the D E P at, at Fred's Matter. It was man-made pond, so basically no jurisdictional requirements. He's a letter in the packet.
Okay. One thing we did, no, what you're, I think what you're referring to is where the, what the outlet is going to.
Well, that was, that was sort of a, I remember that being more of a ditch, you know?
I, I looked at that, I don't know, that's a, a big stretch.
Right, out and dry.
And it'd be on a wetland beyond that.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm saying.
Oh, no, I'm not worried about it. Discharge into a wetland, just, you know, but it, it, no, where, when I recall, where it discharged was a, a fairly defined area.
Yes. Yeah. And I, I ran, I ran the numbers for twenty-five years ago on. The elevation, I think his peak elevation is like, uh, even without, even with Donald Outwell, one sixty-three, and then this pond area is one sixty-five, one sixty-four.
We got about a foot of free water.
Even without.
An over.
Yeah, but what happens at a fifty or? You have two back-to-back, yeah. So, I mean, I have a three-inch orifice there, so that's, that's just, yeah, it works fine.
I think it works really good.
Living out in the Midwest. Yeah, so, so, anyway, back, uh.
Yeah, it's right.
Yeah, we can have back-to-back, it's pretty easy. Yeah, we do. It happens. Look, today and tomorrow.
Would it help if I, for, help facilitate that being? Say again? Would it help if I facilitate that being between these two people?
We'll try to do that.
I mean.
But, but we're hearing from the applicant that they don't even talk to the client.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I think that's a problem they have.
Through a front. And I walk over to their yard and they walk off, just because I've been trying to, and I felt like, listen, I'm making them feel weird, so I don't wanna do this anymore.
Yeah, she told me quite frankly, she just doesn't know which way is the best way.
That's the impression I got.
And, you know, and I just said, I just can't figure out which is the best way.
And, and that's where, you know, you guys need to ride a horse and.
We're proposing the defense and some, we had some greenery that I think, yeah.
That's, Paul, I, I asked tonight when we were at Site Walk, okay, if you had come to an conclusion along the way, because there was gonna be talk, okay, because there was talk about the well, there was talk about the pens, there was talk about greenie and no greenie, and whatever else, and, and so, I mean, if, all that period of time, which has been at least a month, I would say, okay? So, if, if, that period of time, if there has been some doggy.
I thought we had just, like Paul said, let's go by the rules and, you know.
You know, we're not in a position of meeting with her again and trying to talk to her, but.
Her well is way away from it. The fence, I think, is, you know, I, I'd rather not even do a fence, but I, I feel like they need some privacy there, so.
And, and do you mind, Paul, put back, I know it, it really has no bearing, but that your original app, sketch plan was, would have been much closer to their, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, that's right. Yeah, okay, I just wanted to, that's what I thought.
This make the ordinance requirements, but, you know, obviously, it, uh, wasn't as. So, this is a lot better plan, I think, I worry they realize that too, but we went a long way to try to minimize the impact on the property.
Is, is there anything else that the board would like to see?
Well, and that's what, I was getting ready to, uh, ask Ted, just from a, from a lighting and landscaping, are you, are you satisfied, Ted?
And getting the lighting, you started, you talked, just, uh, wall packs, shield it under the building.
Yeah.
Point one foot kennels, like thirty-five feet out, and we're allowed to be point one foot kennels, or at least probably one or something.
So, you really don't have any full lighting? So you really don't have any full lighting along the parking area?
Nope, none whatsoever.
Because it's it's uh it's parking, but it's ultimately gonna be storage.
Correct, pretty much, it's just employee, just for him only.
Storage moving cars in and out.
No intention to work or at the dock.
Right.
Wait, wait, wait. One more time, it's hard not to work at the dock.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any lights out front?
Yeah, considering sun, sun.
Nope, just gotta.
Nine five, nine oh two.
Yeah.
There's no light, there's no lights whatsoever.
Nope, it's not, it's not customer.
On the street.
On the street off this.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
No controller.
This is customer park and you have to.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to get a sense of of whether or not it would be safe to tell the applicant at the next meeting that he would be approved or that he will make some other kind of a change, that's all I'm trying to figure out.
Well, I don't think that, I don't see anything coming from us, but it depends on if the neighbor, if whatever you come up with.
I mean, if we if we come up with something and neighbor says we agree with it, I'm sure the client will be okay with it, and it's gonna be a matter of if that happens.
Yeah, if they provide the uh the fence, green buffer and everything else like that that brings them into compliance, then the question of, and we, Paul has showed us that the water is going to be actually flowing away from their property as opposed to towards it, then they're basically, they have performed and what they needed to do, and it's just a, an accommodation that they've offered to either do both or do a drilled well or whatever, but it, the permit itself is not necessarily contingent on that, is that correct?
Unless you make it contingent upon that.
Yeah, well, I wasn't gonna do that.
The only, there will be, there'll be runoff that will be going towards their well, but that's gonna be a grass area or non developed area. The pavement is graded to take the runoff to the pond.
Right.
So, yeah, the side slope of the gr, you know, the grading will have it, you're gonna have grading, you'll have runoff just in the grass area. That's just the conditions, so it's not gonna be any change. So, any, any kind of hydrocarbons that are in the water and actually pretty much drain, probably be taking care of the grass strip before it gets to the pond.
I would assume, yes.
Yeah. We just have to make sure it works because it was kind of bumpy in there before, make sure it doesn't divert off to the property in the. To the south there, that would work out for a lot.
Curious, um, the the yellow building, the echo, is a residence or is that gonna be a?
Yes, there is a residence.
Where do they use them for something?
They have existing that we had the advanced leach field come in and then actually.
So they're gonna be keeping that same one?
Yes, yeah, they said it was in good shape.
It's too late.
Um, yeah, actually physically, I couldn't tell where it was.
Yeah.
Um, so we look at it based on them taking it out and maybe.
So we're looking at Cholai eleven. I mean, looking at Cholai eleven.
Yes.
That's what man advanced it to?
Yeah, it's a bit.
Yeah, it's gone.
Yeah. I think we should try to get it on here.
If not, I'd use that again.
Shouldn't, I'm not suggesting anything that's out of the ordinary.
Continuance. What about continuance? Or my, that's that's being a little, that's, okay. Yeah.
So what would be entailed if anyone on the next meeting, what would we just have to?
Sure, it decides, you know. You would have, you would have to put aside fourteen day.
I'd have to put aside the fourteen day.
No.
No, I don't think so, because the only thing we don't have is findings of fact. So I think we would be able to proceed forward from that. Because that's the only thing that will be, that will happen, is to call a meeting that will read the findings of fact. And then vote on it. There'll be no discussion in the public.
I want a little more detail from Paul, but I can get that from you, but let us, those make us spect and.
Okay, yeah.
We'll take a look at your priorities a little bit more, you give me updated on that, because I don't think I've got the map map.
So, yeah, I'd like to meet with you on that, if that's okay, with the map map and this question, yeah, no problem.
Yeah, one till Monday, I'd be glad to.
So we can, so we can get, we can get, how does the board feel if we schedule this to be put on the agenda for next week? The only, for the reading of the findings of fact.
Well, will that give enough time to resolve any?
Well, if he was had on Monday, I don't.
Oh, you're meeting with the neighbor?
Yeah.
They've they've met all of the requirements, the fact that the neighbor last.
It's not like we can't come back and two weeks later, three weeks later.
And and say we need to amend the.
We'll go with, yeah, but, yeah.
Will that work for everybody?
I think it's all great right now.
Okay.
Right.
So we'll, we'll put you off for next Thursday, you'll be the first item on the agenda, and we just, we'll read the findings of fact.
Give me a promise.
The second one, okay. We have somebody who has delayed, who has asked us for the past two meetings to put them off, and so they're the first ones on the agenda.
Okay, so you're second.
Thank you.
So you'll be the second, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda. Yeah, just a wait, Paul. Motor Land Classic Cars Major Conditional Use Permit Application, A Request to Construction to Construct An Additional Thirteen Parking Spaces And A Two Bus Parking Area On Both The Applicant's Parcel And An Adjacent Property Tax Map. No, I'm not reading that again, because that's not right, because he's, he's not using the adjacent property. But that's the way it's written.
So.
You don't have the application?
Just repeat what was in the word before, okay?
A Request to Construct An Additional Thirteen Parking Spaces And A Two Bus Parking Area On The Applicant's Parcel In Support Of The Conversion.
Why do I do it?
Okay. Request to construct additional thirteen parking spaces uh and in the existing display area of the applicant's parcel In Support Of Conversion Of Nine Thousand Nine Hundred Pound Public Auto Store Room Into Auto Museum Of Four Point Nine Acre Plus Or Minus Acre Site Located At Two Twenty Five Sixty Four Portland Road Tax Map Two Lot One In The BI District. Motor Land LLC Is The Owner And The Applicant And Sandra Gay Is The Escort Is The Applicant's Agent.
Thank you. Now we can try. Does the board have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, did I see the the Tucker on the road the other day?
Not on the road, not yet.
No, 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 reason I had, I haven't done a look at it, but is it maroon color?
No, it's beige.
Okay, no, I thought I saw one similar to it.
If you see another one, if you see another one, let me know.
I'm just, I was heading to Bedderford Saturday and I thought, whoa, oh, oh, okay.
So, I I have one question, have the cars been moved?
Yes, we sent, I have a picture, and they were again, they were there temporarily when we were all together at the site map. We looked at the line of cars that were parked where the new lot was coming in. We had decided that we were going to go and um put new sealant on the entire lot, just to help make it look nicer. And then, working with the paving contractor and just to keep our business operations going, and with the striping requirements and the parking requirements that you requested us to do, we had four areas that needed to be moved and with just our operation, we can't, we can't do everything with the the site map. I'm sorry, with the uh move move everything, so we had to do it in phases, and then of course the weather didn't help, because we kept getting postponed and postponed and postponed. In fact, the sealant on the front, so the sealant on the back half has been done. So, when Jim Nagle came over the other day, we had showed him the sealant was done, we had ample room to park the cars in the lane or inside our warehouse, but just for a combination of keeping business operations going and because we were gonna have to move whenever the paving contractors said they were gonna come, right? And with the weather, it's like, we're gonna be here, we're gonna have to move all the service portion out so they can do that, all the employee portion would need to be out, the display lot, the customer parking, so we had all these configurations. So with the permission of of our business partner owns the land, we just moved them over, it was, it was only supposed to be a few days, as I explained to Jim, you know, the fact that the weather delays, because we had this multi phased approach to get the whole parking lot done, doesn't help my business if the cars aren't on the lot to to be able to sell them. But at the same time, if I kept them all on the lot, and then where was I gonna put the employees' cars and all of that, so that's why we moved them over. I will show you a photo. On that. This is taken this afternoon. So, there's the. So that, that's the paving and the body, and that's where the cars are gonna typically park. Let's see, that was it, oops. So that's today, that two oh four.
It rained today.
Okay.
Yeah, we got wet.
Oh, yeah, you can see it in the pictures.
Anybody else wanna see it?
You can.
See, you told me they were gonna be gone.
Yeah. And and well, that was the the big concern, because having those vehicles over there violated your permit, because there's no parking lot over there. There's no permit that allows that lot to be used for anything of that nature, and I was concerned that it would put your, because if there's a violation, we're not gonna hear you. So when Jim Nagle and I had that conversation, and I told him to go talk to you about getting those vehicles out of there so that we could proceed forward, because I know you've got an event coming up this weekend.
Well, we haven't sent any invitations out. But, so when Jim Nagle came down, I met, I spent two hours with him, and and what he said to me was, he saw no, he was not gonna issue a violation.
Yeah.
And he didn't see a violation.
Anyway.
That's what he told me.
It was supposed to be a temporary thing, it was a few days longer than they thought, it'd been moved.
Right, and the issue, the issue has been resolved, and that's, that's what I told Jim, we just needed to get that issue resolved.
Thank you.
Does the board have any, any questions for the applicant?
It's gonna be a nice weekend.
Okay, so, well, Paul, you were talking about the the barriers between the, so you, is, is that noted on there, what type of barrier it is, or could you just leave it at?
I have noted installed four thirty six inch tall freestanding concrete walls.
So you just have to change, change that?
Yeah, we'd have to change that to existing granite curbing.
Are you putting, you put granite curbing?
I mean, uh, concrete uh. Sorry, concrete wheel stops.
I like that, granite curb, right there.
Yeah. The only trouble is, the cars don't.
Pardon?
Cars don't.
For what?
Granite curbing.
It's not granite curbing.
I know, I'm just saying, when you bump it, it don't give.
Yeah.
So you're gonna just put?
Pump stops.
Wheel stops?
That's what's there now, correct.
Oh, it's what's there now.
Yep, so I would change, unfortunately, I have.
Yeah, we signed that at the.
And they have some wheel stops there.
No, this can't be right.
Wheel stops would do damage to the car by backing up and all their.
Absolutely.
But we did sign something when we went on the site.
It's not matter of last.
I so, unfortunately, I don't have.
I signed the drawdown.
Get approval, so these guys move forward.
What, which make condition of that new.
I said whatever, that's what I said.
That's always signed, we've signed the drawdown for the project.
Okay.
That's what I signed.
Moving right along.
So, yeah, so.
No, I, I think this is all ready to go, you did a good job.
Do I can read the findings of fact, then we can go?
Yes.
Yep.
I'm getting hungry.
Whereas on May twenty third, two thousand nineteen, the Arundel Planning Board received a site plan use application from Motor Land Properties LLC To Convert A Ninety Nine Hundred Square Foot Automobile Showroom Into A Classic Automobile Museum And Reduce The Existing Automobile Display Area To Accommodate Thirteen New Parking Spaces For The Museum Users On A Four Point Nine Plus Or Minus Acre Site Located At Twenty Five Sixty Four Fulton Road Tax Map Two Lot One In The BI District. Whereas On May thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, The Planning Board Deemed The Resubmitted Application Complete And Scheduled A Public Hearing For June Thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. Whereas On June Thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, The Planning Board Did Not Have, Did Not Meet, the the uh meeting was rescheduled to June twentieth. Whereas On June twentieth, two thousand nineteen, The Planning Board Conducted A Public Hearing In Conformance With Land Use Section Nine Point Two Nine. And Whereas The Arundel Planning Board Has Determined The Following Findings Of Fact And Notice Of Decision. Findings Of Fact, The Owner Of The Property Is Motor Land Properties LLC. Number Two, The Property Is Located At Twenty Five Sixty Four Fulton Road Tax Map Two Lot One In The BI District. Number Three, The Property Currently Contains An Automobile Sales And Service Facility Initially Approved By The Arundel Planning Board On October Twenty Seventh, two thousand eleven, Currently Occupied By A Classic Auto Dealership DBA Motor Land Classic Cars. Number Four, The Applicant Received An Approval From The Planning Board On July Fourteenth, two thousand sixteen To Construct A Sixty By Two Hundred And Ten Foot Multi Use Storage Metal Storage Building On The Site To Provide Heated Storage For Automobiles, A Service Facility Containing Four Bays With Lifts And Aparts And Office Area. Number Five, The Applicant Subsequently Received A Permit On April Twenty Eighth, two thousand nineteen To Convert Ninety Nine Hundred Square Feet Of The Existing Storage Facility Into An Automobile Showroom Open To The Public Improve Parking Facilities And Construct A Public Courtyard With Raised Seating To Be Used As An Exterior Showroom And Public Entry For Customers. Number Six, The Applicant Has Since Proposed To Modify The April Twenty Eight, two thousand nineteen Conditional Use Permit To Convert The Approved Showroom Into An Automobile Museum Open To The Public And Provide Thirteen User Parking Spaces In Conformance With Land Use Ordinance Section Five Twelve Five. Number Seven, The Parking Will Be Located Along The Western Edge Of The Existing Exterior Automobile Display Area Reducing This Area Down To No Less Than Five Thousand Square Feet. Number Eight, Existing Lighting Shall Be Sufficient To Serve The Nighttime Requirements Of The Museum Parking. Number Nine, Revised Parking Layouts Are Depicted On The Plan Set Entitled Amended Site Plan For Motor Land Dated Five Twenty Three Nineteen With Revisions Through Five Thirty Nineteen And Prepared By Paul Gadboy P E.
Mr. Chairman, we also said with revisions through.
Six thirteen.
Okay.
Wait.
So revised parking layouts are depicted on the site plan titled, entitled Amendment Site Plan For Motor Land Dated Five Twenty Three Nineteen With Revisions Through Six Thirteen, two thousand nineteen.
Stop, stop, question, he also says he's gonna be putting another one together to.
Kerbs house is.
One more revision.
It it don't.
Yeah.
Okay.
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 Conformance With Conditional Use Criteria, After Due Review And Consideration, The Arundel Planning Board Has Determined The Application To Be In Conformance With The Criteria Of Section Nine Two Nine Of The Arundel Land Use Ordinance As Follows, Nine Two Nine One. That The Use Is Compatible With And Similar To General Categories Of Uses Of Neighborhooding Properties. Museums Are Permitted Uses In The BI District, The Use Is Consistent In Scale And Use With Other Uses In The Surrounding Neighborhood And The District.
To approve.
But, motion's been made and seconded to approve Nine Two Nine One, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Nine Two Nine Two, The Use Is Consistent With The Comprehensive Plan And The Anticipated Future Development Of The Neighborhood In That The Comprehensive Plan Specifies Automobile Sales And Service Facilities As Well As Museums To Be Appropriate In And The Use Is Consistent With The Long Range Plan For The BI.
To approve.
Second, motion's been made and seconded for Nine Two Nine Two, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Nine Two Nine Three, That There Is Adequate And Safe Pedestrian And Vehicular Access To And Into The Site To Accommodate The Anticipated Traffic To And From The Use, The Proposed Parking Layout Meets The Minimum Requirements For Museum Floor Spaces As Specified In Land Use Ordinance Section Five Twelve Four. However, The On Site Parking Is Insufficient To Meet The Parking Demands Of Large Events Or Bus Traffic, Bus Tour Traffic That Might Be Tempted To Utilize The Facility, No Parking For The Museum Is Permitted On The Adjacent Parcel Map Two Lot One A Or Along Route One Unless Specifically Approved By The Planning Board.
Through moves.
Second, motion's been made and seconded for Nine Two Nine Three, any discussion?
Just a clarification that um that the only way we'll specifically approve parking on Route One or is if, or or on the adjacent parcels if they.
Could come to us and ask.
Yeah, okay.
But right now they can't. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. It is unanimous. Nine two nine four, that there is adequate water supply and sewage disposal available to service the use. The existing septic system, the existing septic system has been determined by the CEO to have sufficient capacity to accommodate the additional customers that will be supported by the museum.
To approve.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded for nine two nine four, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. That there will be no noise, nine two nine five, that there will be no noise, dust, odor, vibration, or smoke generated by the use that will adversely affect neighboring properties in that noise, dust, and smoke, the nature of the business does not generate any additional noise, dust, or smoke. Glare, the applicant has installed additional lighting in accordance with the plans, and there are medial recommendations made by J&amp;M Lighting Incorporated, and has met the performance standards of Land Use Section five ten. Motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Nine two nine six, that the physical characteristics of the site, including locations, slopes, soils, drainage, and vegetative cover are suitable for the proposed use. The proposed use will not measurably change the existing topography, slopes, soils, or vegetative cover of the site.
So move, second.
Motion's been made and seconded for nine two nine six, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Nine two nine seven, that the use will not constitute a public or private nuisance. No additional nuisances will be generated by the proposed use.
To approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for nine two nine seven, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Nine two nine eight, that all other requirements and applicable provisions of this ordinance, particularly any pertinent performance standards, are met. The applicant has met all the pertinent portions of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance in the design of the proposed activities.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for nine two nine eight. Any discussion?
No.
Yeah, Marty?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm about to say that. It's, it's, it's hard to know with it, yep.
I got it.
Hey, you can hear it all the way down there.
Okay. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conditions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the amendment to an existing conditional use application of Moteland Properties LLC to the May twenty-third, two thousand nineteen...
What?
That, that is repeating itself. That sentence at the bottom.
Wow, you're the one who gave it to me.
Well, you're the one who handed it out.
Yeah, wow, that's weird.
Okay, please do.
Wow. Okay. The result is in finding collisions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves our new conditional use application of Moteland Properties to convert nine thousand nine hundred square foot automobile showroom into a classic automobile museum to reduce the existing automobile displacement to accommodate the fewer parking spaces for the museum users on a four point nine acre site located at twenty-five sixty-four Fulton Road, tax map two, lot one in the BI District, subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall not be required to secure a certificate of occupancy to the museum until its approved parking improvements have been installed, partly approved plans prepared by Paul Gadboy's P.E. and dated five twenty-three nineteen with revisions to six thirteen nineteen. All thirteen parking spaces should be installed with wheel stops to prevent collision with display vehicles. The wheel stops shall be installed between the employee parking area to the west and museum park, and museum visitor parking to prevent any collision between parked employee vehicles and backing visitor vehicles. No more or any LLC vehicles should be stored or temporarily parked adjoining. Parcel identifies two, lot two, map two, lot one A without planning or approval, so any buses or livery vehicles shall park on the adjacent parcel. Doors should, vehicles be parked on Route one.
Question on that?
Yeah.
Excuse my ignorance of the English languages, what is a livery vehicle?
Like a limousine.
A rented vehicle.
That's why, not, don't run in those circles.
You don't take...
Can I just point a clarification on this? So, if they have like a one-day event, and people pull up on there, is that gonna be in it? I mean, the initiative's not used as parking, but, I mean, they may not be able to... If they have a one-day event, people might pull in there and park.
I, I would say that that's not allowed.
But it's not being used as regular parking, I mean, better than...
Usually what you're doing, how do you get something from the selectmen?
Right.
To get something from the selectmen, okay, pretty good.
Yeah, they get like a mass gathering or a special events permit. So, the selectmen can override that.
Okay.
Okay, 'cause that happens elsewhere. When we have a special event, the selectmen usually... Am I, am I wrong on that, Melville?
No.
So, that's the way you handle that, and that supersedes the planning board in that situation.
May I just have a point of clarification?
Yeah.
On, on the Route one frontage parking, because I know this has come up before. We don't do that, we don't condone that, we kind of agree. But in the past, the York County Sheriff's Department has said it is illegal to park on Route one.
It, it may be legal, but our ordinance doesn't allow for it. So, the sheriff may say, as far as he's concerned, that the state law says that you can, but as far as the Land Use Ordinance is concerned, you can't. So, and, so you have to follow the stricter of the two.
Or what's a murder vehicle?
Yeah.
Uh...
Violation.
Or a murder vehicle, the other one's a violation of local land use ordinance, that's all. It's competing jurisdictions.
Pretty much.
No, sorry, I wouldn't argue with the York County Sheriff on that.
Well, I don't argue with him either. Why not say yes or take the ticket and go?
Okay.
They don't take that one, they go to the...
Okay.
All right, moving on. Fire suppression system installed shall, in the museum, shall be checked and certified by oper- as operational by fire protection installment contractor every two years. So approved by the Arundel Planning Board this twentieth day, that was something the fire chief did.
Yeah.
So approved by the Arundel Planning Board this twentieth day of June, two thousand nineteen. Moved.
Yeah.
Second, motion's been made and seconded to approve the permit process. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous.
Sir Jamie, and who worked with the livery too?
So, I have...
Yeah.
There are taxes towards...
I ultimately wanted, I didn't know if it was intended to be, you listen.
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
Livery.
There's a livery license.
Yeah, sometimes you see it on the license plate.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, folks.
Yes, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Like I said, I normally...
So, we need to have you back, get some news, sir, on Mike.
I think we're gonna try to do it a week from Saturday, so, you'll all be invited to stop by.
Roger, did you sign it?
I have to amend before you sign it.
Yeah, we've got a...
Remember, there's a business...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but we can sign it, we'll sign it again.
We actually consented on this, there's another page, I mean, you think we're...
Yeah.
Oh my God, it's you again.
Yes.
Item number five, Morocco Enterprises LLC, a major conditional use pre-application subdivision amendment. Proposal to construct a five thousand square foot commercial building with five leasable spaces each on two approved subd...
Subdivision lots.
With, okay, on two approved subdivision lots in the Enterprise Drive Commercial subdivision, tax map twelve lots eight E nine consisting of one point four six acres, and tax map twelve lot eight E ten consisting of one point five eight acres in the BI District. The two sites will be serviced by a common driveway from Enterprise Drive. Morocco Enterprises LLC is the owner applicant. There's just one building, right?
Two buildings.
There's two buildings, okay. Well, that's, that's what stopped me on here, because it said a proposal to construct a five thousand square foot building. It's to construct two.
Well, on each...
It's on each floor, that's on each...
On each one, one on each, is essentially what the language says.
Well, I didn't, I didn't understand the way it was written, so it threw me off.
Rich. One and one is two.
Not in my word.
This is gonna be the...
Pretty hated, okay.
One and one is three.
I guess I'd like to see what the planning board has, his thoughts on the sidewalk, first of all.
No mosquito, please.
I moved that if we have to go back, that you spray for mosquitoes before we do.
For six days, every day before we get there?
Oh my God, that was crazy. Roger's hip is completely covered.
So, you know, if you guys saw any issues in the sidewalk, it's up to you to be aware of it, as far as that's concerned.
What in the world, aren't you hearing, mosquitoes?
Oh, boy. Yeah. So, again, you know, the single drive, I think it makes sense for this project, especially to be after local to the properties. I did revise the plan a little bit to add more parking places. So, I had pretty much had the square footage exactly what was approved, as far as impervious areas of the site. Because I read the contract that you had two requirements, I believe this is what we're coming under?
Yeah.
For parking, I really don't really quite get what it says, but it said, uh... Parking is one parking space shall be provided for each employee, and one parking space for every three hundred square feet of showroom. And then it says, one additional handicap parking space shall be provided for customer use. So, I'm not really sure what that means, but, um, so...
That's if you have a showroom.
Oh, well, I think each one of these have an office, right, so it says customer office, right?
Yeah.
So, it's assumed that you have, you're not gonna have three hundred square feet, we'll probably have a... It could be a, I don't know, it could be close to three, it won't be over three hundred square feet. So, we need one parking space for each unit, because each unit's gotta have an office.
Right.
And then I'm assuming we're gonna have one employee per unit.
Okay.
So, we need two, and then, uh, one additional handicap, is that for every unit? Or is that one additional?
No, under ADA, you're only gonna need, you only need one for every twenty five.
Okay, that's kind of, wasn't quite sure about that. Um, but I did reconfigure this, so, um, actually, I kind of was gonna put a handicap parking spot here, and a handicap parking spot here for each different site. I didn't show the handicap symbol, and kind of about to do that.
Is it seventy-five feet from the, the last door?
Probably not.
Oh, probably not, no.
Does it have to be?
Can it be closer?
Oh, no, it can be much closer.
It can't be any further.
It can't be any further. It's getting within seventy-five feet of a door?
Yeah. Where do you put across?
I know that.
So, I have to do this.
Yeah, I can do that.
You have to do that, you're shopping, some of the worst.
So, obviously, you know...
It's a good door heater.
Yeah, you put that one.
Yeah, that'll work.
I just put her over here, that'll work.
I kind of thought it'd be nicer to have it up, right?
Well, hey, look, it's their problem with Alpha One.
Hey, paint it, paint it, and then they, and then anybody can park where they want.
Without question, it'll be painted.
And so, I pretty much have roughly three parking spaces per unit, maybe not quite, I'm unshy. So, I think that'll be a lot better for the applicants.
Um...
That's my next, that's my next job. Yeah, I may have to put, you know, vaulters here, I mean, some laundry room. Yeah, I think I might be definitely there, but I haven't figured that out yet, that's my next problem. That'd be right there.
Yeah, but this isn't jurisdictional.
No, no, that was a building setback that we pulled. I said, no one should go that close to a rattman, so I proposed that the building setback would be there. Um, so, um, I'm assuming landscaping's not gonna be a huge deal for this project?
Just in the front.
Obviously, you know, we're gonna maintain the garage buffer, we're gonna maintain this buffer, we're not doing any work again, the only thing will be clearing this. Um, so I'm assuming we don't have to come up with a huge landscaping plan?
No.
Um, lighting's gonna just be on the building against some wall packs that won't shed more than probably a point one.
There won't be any pole lighting in the parking lot or anything?
Um, and then we had the septic systems kind of over last Thursday, so, we do have the two new septic systems being designed right now. They were taped out by the soul scientists, so, that looks, there was a whole pit here and a whole pit here, but this works better for the site, so we don't put it here and here. Um, and I guess I just wanted to make sure we were okay with parking before I proceed with the grading plan and, and all the other good stuff that comes with it.
What about the rear buffer between the, uh, the two lots? Between the rear, yeah, that one's real tight.
You weren't there on that walk. It, it's bigger than you think.
Oh, no, but, no, no, I'm, I'm not worried, because the building's way down here, but it's just maintaining that. It's no sort of buffer, I think you have that to the feet, should be a little bit.
Yeah, it should be a little bit, because we're gonna, you know, we just walk, it should be maintained.
Because you could probably hold this grade.
That's correct, exactly. Yeah, he's feeling level in the back of the building, it's amazing, you know, we tried up a mountain once we got to the plateau.
Yeah, it was pretty tight, yeah. It was, you know, everybody made it out to sound like it was such a horror show, but it was, it was...
Yeah, I didn't move the building, it was further this way, I didn't move back.
Yeah.
You know, just makes sense. Better be closer to the drop off, so... The blasting will make the fills and therefore...
Oh, it certainly will.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot left.
Up front, in the back, when you have, there's some slab anyway.
Too close to the property line?
No, I gotta be, the rear property is twenty-five foot setbacks from the rear. So, that's the setback line right here, so I gotta probably actually break twenty-seven feet.
I believe it could be...
Oh, yeah. No, I don't want to be exact, so I'm about twenty-seven feet right now.
Okay.
The same thing, you have twenty-seven feet of the property line, taking consideration overhangs and... Things of that nature. So, yeah, I think if the boards, uh, didn't see any major issues with the sidewalk, then I'm gonna proceed with grading.
Yeah.
And then get the sewers, uh, redesigned, and we'll be back.
And spraying.
Spraying?
Oh.
Spraying.
Oh, spraying!
For mosquitoes.
We won't have to worry.
We're not moving there, are we?
I hope not.
So... I'm not gonna be moving there, but... If it was bad, they will definitely kill, they got enough to turn around to be drawn.
The mosquito populations.
Oh my God, it was crazy.
Jamie didn't notice, he was watching the lady slippers.
Watching what?
The lady slippers.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I didn't have socks on with my sneakers, I can't even tell you.
I like to, I like to surprise you guys every now and then.
He carried me down practically.
Did he?
It was like, oh my God, it was like, my feet were soaking wet, it was, it was challenging. Yes, no, I know exactly what to wear on the next sidewalk.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Curious, at some point, are you gonna have a sign at your driveway for, for the businesses, or...
No, there'd be construction, there's not basically any retail business in there at all, so, basically contractors. It's gonna be pretty private, exactly.
Okay.
I mean, it's an industrial cult, I mean, it's really a cult, it's all, it's all businesses that are in there.
It'd be door stickers, I'm sure, on the windows or whatever, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, you wanna check the fire department on, uh, on signing and so forth, and addressing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And also check on them, check with the chief and make sure that he's happy with this.
Okay.
Before you do final grading.
Yep.
You want, I'll take a look at it and see if you get, you know, whether you can get, if he needs to get, get crews in the back.
You have designed the turnarounds right now for thirty-foot box trucks, but, but you're talking...
Yeah, you, yeah, you should talk to him about turning, if you have to get...
I, I think he'd be in pretty good shape if he makes a tear for, if he come back, but...
Yeah. He's not gonna wanna get too close.
Oh, yeah, right.
But just, you know, that, that pulled me up there, just see if he has to get around the back, if he needs more space, I think he'll be okay.
Yeah, I'll follow up.
Is the nearest one, what is it, one, two, three, down the road?
The hydrant.
One, two, three, yeah.
Now, we're more pressured now supposedly? Yeah, you got minimum fifty P S N.
Yeah, I know, it's really low in this project, it would be about.
It's constant.
Which wouldn't be that big a deal because they put a truck down there to push it up there.
Right, right, right. Yeah, it's a hydrant, right? I think the applicant had to install that hydrant for this project.
Probably.
The whole road.
I believe, yeah.
Yes, yes. When it was Dr. Bobo first started.
Yep.
I believe he put that hydrant across the street, and then he fought like hell.
Across the street?
Yeah, he did. Yeah, that's where they are.
That's where the water's.
The mains on that side of the road. The mains on that side of the road.
Well, it just, it just brings to mind when, when, uh, the boatyard, old post town, got fired and the state D O T drove over a five-inch line.
Yes.
Ran it over, they said, we don't care. We're gonna plow the road and then ran the line over. Worked really well to put the fire. Okay, I was, I was just kidding, I didn't realize it was on the other side.
It's on the other side, the twelve-inch mains on that side of the road. I think Phil was the same, I'll put the hydrant in there, I'm not bringing it across the street, I can't.
Yes. That's it. Because there, there's no water, otherwise, the only one closest on that side of the, the road is when Fritz put it in.
Yeah.
And now also you have, uh, seasonal cottages. No, but I'm just saying, on that side of the road.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Everybody, everybody ready to let him go put, put his paperwork together?
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Go have a good time, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the minutes.
I know there'll be no dog candles in these, uh.
Not gonna go there.
He didn't have fluttered.
Potato, do you April twenty-fifth?
April twenty-fifth.
I was not here.
Do we have a form of the reason why these happen to approve?
We haven't had a form.
Yeah, it looks like it. Kane, Warren, McGinn, Genon, four out of five.
Thank goodness.
So, who made the motion to approve?
Was there a second?
I had your ear, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Roger made the motion, we still need the second. April twenty-fifth. Okay, I'll second. Motion has been made and seconded for the, to approve the minutes of April twenty-fifth. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
It is approved. It is approved, four, four approvals, two abstentions. May ninth.
The abstentions are.
Hang on, the abstentions are?
Yeah, they were not here.
Jane.
May ninth. We have three out of the four people in here, so.
And on this one, Corinne, thank you for looking into that one question I had on this.
Oh, not a problem, it was quite the meeting, so. So, we can't approve these because we don't have enough people.
Yeah, we have three.
Do we? We have three out of four, okay.
Who's to approve?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve May ninth, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the rest of us are abstaining.
Abstaining.
Yes.
I saw the conference already, it started.
I saw that the other day.
They brought sand and important, the pudding today.
May twenty-third. Tom wasn't here for the applicant, the rest of us. Motion's been made to approve?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And one abstention. And May thirtieth.
I remember this meeting. I move that we approve the minutes.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Roger, was, was that you that seconded?
Yes.
And Tom, you're abstaining?
Yes.
Five in favor, one abstention. Other business?
According to, when you get, when you get.
Sign and give them to you. I know, I've just been, can't do it until.
I don't think, I want them now.
So, I have.
Just sign, just sign, sign a copy of them.
I don't, I don't do it.
I didn't make it to the town meeting, but I've had a couple of discussions, uh, with , uh, local residents of Arundel who are distressed that Mark Pennett wasn't able to get some relief, um, with his zoning and, um, I understand why, that perhaps it didn't pass, but I have an idea that might, we might be able to help him out without having to go through, you know, looking at overlay zones or rewriting the animal husbandry thing or whatever. And that is, um, a, a permit for a non-conforming property. We can't do it.
Non-conforming properties.
Okay, 'cause in, I was in a, lived in a historic overlay zone in Los Angeles and properties that were non-conforming on a case-by-case basis could be approved. So, that sort of eliminates the worry that Donna had that all of a sudden it would open the door to something that we didn't want necessarily, but it allowed for some flexibility for people like Mark, he finds himself in the middle of the, the R one district. So, so much for my brilliant idea. Oh, well.
If, if we had been able to put in a defined overlay or something, then, then that would have been a possibility, but since it's not a permitted use, you don't do the non-conforming. Unless it was there to start with and then they restricted to whatever they had at that point.
And this is a, an addition to the property that he has, is that right?
He's had numerous additions to the property. But he, his problem is.
There are also separate clauses to, I mean, you were always, it's a two, when they're done, the continuation, and that's why they could not.
I just don't think he fully necessarily realized how close the door was.
I think he does. I think he knows.
Well, now he knows.
No, I think he knew before.
Did he? Okay, so he expressed some, uh, question as to what exactly that meant, and, uh, I said, of course, I didn't know. And I was thinking about my non-conforming, making it a non-conforming property, but that doesn't apply.
He's short of, short of getting something through from an animal husbandry point of view that would address animal husbandry in a residential zone. At this point, he's stuck with the, uh, the current ordinance, which is five thousand pounds of beef.
I got it.
Or, or anything else. I say beef simply because that's what he's got.
Well, he's got, he has aspirations for.
Okay, well, that was my idea.
Okay. Staff report is that, uh, we have, uh, a lot of activity going through, more stuff coming in. Next video, we'll also have, uh, Oak, Oak Ridge is coming back, they've done a great rework. Uh, a lot of stuff, we're probably wanna get, since it's not going to D E P, it's not going to site location, probably gonna wanna have, uh, our engineers take a look at the, uh, the hydro.
Are they still coming out on Laurel Way?
Still coming out on Laurel Way. Uh, Mike had at, Neil Butter had requested that D E P do a wildlife inventory, a critical species inventory on the space.
Oh, yeah, I got that, okay.
And he found, spotted turtle evidence, but they found it in Mike's property, in the mayor's.
Oops.
Oops.
Which property was that?
That was, that's the old Davis farm.
Oh, that's farm property, okay.
It's actually, you know, it was actually in the, in the old Davis pond area, that's, that's really where it was.
But there was one in the proposed subdivision area.
It wasn't in the subdivision. And now the subdivisions probably moved out. Also, they, you know, they, they got rid of the, the oversized lots and, and realized they had to use the cluster, uh, information. And, uh, I've talked to also ACT, uh, a few members of ACT, and that might be interesting if, if they, uh, posed it to the engineer, and maybe we might have an opportunity to get the two of those together about redeployment of that permanent open space where ACT would be interested.
I had talked with at least two of them, maybe three, and, and suggested that they get together.
Yeah.
With the developer and talk to them.
I've given each other the addresses, I believe they are starting to talk to each other, but I don't have the intention. I know, I know Walter's interested.
It would benefit everybody.
It would benefit everybody, you know, whether or not the, the whole ones won't be responsible for that much open space, is always a question, so. Uh, but I'll probably be asking you guys to, to authorize, they all, they've also done their hydro geo.
Okay.
Okay, so, you know, they've done the nutrition, so that looks, I, I have a view, yeah, I just thought that was just, so. Uh, we also have, I also have a couple of private ways that are going on. Raptor Falls is about at the two-thirds point.
Okay.
So, we have another show down to Raptor Falls.
When are they planning on opening?
As soon as they can, but I don't think.
Maybe.
I think we're not gonna.
I mean, not before the snow flies.
No, they'll, they'll get, yeah, they, they run into some problems. But, well, the ledge isn't really that bad, it's, there was a confusion between the contractor and the owner, they took the insulation out and they had to put it back in. You know, Bubek is Bubek, it doesn't matter, if you're occupying that unit, it's gotta be Bubek by state law, so. Uh, but, you know, they're at two-thirds stage, so now you're gonna see the fun stuff start going, start putting in the water.
Yeah.
Few rats.
Well, the last top, you know, they, they won't put the, the dinosaurs probably until year year. You know, the landscape building, the absolute landscape, so. Uh, let's see, uh, also we have, um, we also have a couple of the subdivisions that are in the works right now, and, uh, update on Bandle, Ben, this one into a few snags and they're gonna be opening, uh, for a while, so.
I saw that on their sign.
Yeah.
Because for, I think, I think it says now it's what, fall?
Yeah.
For the longest time, it was spring, and I was going, man, I need a good restaurant to get.
At, during, uh, yeah, the fundraiser last week, they were, they were there and were telling people in the fall, they're still in construction.
They're still open in Kennyville.
Yeah, they, they were able to keep that lease, so that's, so.
But they have also run the water for the sprinkling system.
And it, it's just, you know, it's, it's the problem that you run to, old, old structure, we're adding an old structure. There's more deterioration than you thought, and, and there's modern requirements, you know, fire safety and, meaning the fire marshal requirements, what's it, the one more requirement they have to meet, so. But they're banging away at it, so. They, uh, they asked me for a modification on the lights, because they had some rather fancy, expensive lights and, you know, there's some shoeboxes and something showing to me, and they haven't come back in, Jimmy hasn't come back in, so. Maybe they found something, I don't know, but.
It'll be a nice addition.
It'll be a great addition.
Yeah, it'll be one. And the farm stand is going great guns.
Farm stand's going great guns, uh, yeah, they, uh, we got that all squared away, um, and they should be operational soon.
Good. That's fun to have back there. The drywall was going in, I went by today and even in the rain, the drywall.
Oh, they aren't gonna stop, they're gonna keep cooking.
They poured today.
They're cooking with.
They, they were pouring today, too.
I didn't see that, I just went by.
They put them in the target. No, it's good pouring.
That was just for the downpour at two o'clock.
Oh, jeez. So, they didn't have to add any water to the mix.
No, no, it was very.
Sure slower.
It'll cure slower, it'll be better.
It's slurry.
Yeah, it'll cure, it'll cure better, a little fast curing, not get swollen.
Yeah.
Uh, so, that's, that's about all the ones I have right now, though, uh, no further updates on any of our outstanding, you know, appeals. Uh, so, there's nothing moving on that yet.
Question?
Yes, sir.
There was something for the zoning board of appeals.
Yes, there was.
Okay. What was that all about? Because that applicant never even came to us for anything.
Well, he wouldn't, he wouldn't have to come to us because that was an existing approved
lot, there's a lot of record. Uh, what had happened was they had, uh, they had not accounted for the, the increased width of Limerick Road due to the proximity of the railroad. Railroad had demanded increased widths at crossings, uh, of their.
I'm talking about La, uh, I'm talking about.
Eastern, you're talking about.
No, not the Eastern Trail.
Oh, you're not talking about Limerick one?
No, I'm talking about Joe Labrador.
There's no appeal.
Home improvement.
What was that?
Oh, it's supposed to have been on the board of appeal, uh.
I don't know about that one, I mean, I know nothing about that.
Log cannon?
Yeah. Log cannon? I don't know.
I mean, it's, I looked on the town website and turned out, said today was the nineteenth and the twentieth, they had a, a board of, uh, appeals.
I don't, I've been aware of that, to be honest with you.
I'm curious as to what he'd be appealing because he hasn't been here in great.
So, on, on the, um, the dog, uh, pet daycare, I'd like to have us work on changing that, that phrase as soon as possible.
Yeah.
But, you know, interestingly enough, and I think we should make it clear because clearly I'm the boogeyman, uh, in, uh, this particular application, though it takes a majority of the board to either accept or deny a permit, so I'm only one vote, but that the, um, permit was largely denied because of the water and that the land use ordinance about the cages not being locked or whatever our interpretation was, um, was an issue too, but it wasn't the only issue.
Correct.
And that there were other things that had to be addressed and, uh, you know, so.
I don't think we really should talk much about the application.
Nope, this is just more, uh, yeah, not so much about the application, but the possibility of fixing that section in the ordinance.
Right.
Or anything else for, at this time, to, instead of just taking one sentence, one word or anything else, I mean, uh, so then.
Well, that'll be a discussion that we can have when we decide that we're, that we're going to discuss the ordinance in terms of whether or not we're actually going to make any change or if we're going to leave it the way it is.
Well, I agree with Marty, if you start to make changes, we should really look at the whole thing and bring it into some kind of reasonable.
That's all you have, Tab?
Uh, yeah, I, I could go on forever, but I probably don't.
No.
Okay, I'll make a motion where you drew.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, we're done. Nine, one nine.
You need this, uh, site, finding the facts that needs to be.
Uh, actually, no, because I gotta redo the whole thing.
Oh, so we have to resign it?
Yeah, basically, but I appreciate you guys doing it, but I do want you to sign on my line.
All right.
All right? This is a rental machine, these guys wanna get big, they, they just got their, uh, D E P sample patients, our, our cells already cut down trees and he's ready to go. Well, myself, a rental machine.
Oh, yes, that, the other one is.
Oh, it's, I'm gonna call Hattler's again.
Yeah, he's.
How many are there, they're fine?
Lots.
Lots?
No, there's only, uh, there's two sheets, two, uh, papers and one mile. And you know, you're small, tight, small paper.
You keep going, it'll stop.
Well, don't you want me to use the other pen?
No, you can use that on the papers.
Use that.
Well, it'd be nice if you did a sequential, yeah.
Well, I think it's the angle, so to speak.
Don't let you, these two.
Is that still on or off?
Uh, that's, uh, that's off.